So, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And before we call this study session to order, I would like to remind everybody in the audience, if you have a cellphone, please put it on mute or turn it off. We don't want it going off during the meeting, just as a courtesy to everyone. Also, when I call the meeting to order here, I'll just have a few opening comments, and then I'm going to hand it over to staff who will introduce our presenters. Please be advised that today is a study session. There is no action item on the proposed agreement that was posted on our website yesterday afternoon, and this just deals with the land dedication. So, we're getting close enough, so I'll hold on a second. So, anyway, good morning. At this time, we'll go ahead and call this study session to order. And again, I'd like to welcome you today. It's good to see a lot of faces, both here in our boardroom and in Zoom. So, thank you for joining us. Today, we're going to be talking about a proposed...
Turn off your video, so... You can turn... There's no video. But you can... You can turn off your video, so it's just your name.
Can you mute everybody on Zoom? Okay, great, good. Little glitches, that's what happens when we live in Zoom world. Anyway, as I was saying, today's proposed agreement only deals with a proposed dedication of 134 acres of private property owned by South 32 to Santa Cruz County for a public park. Now, we know that this topic has generated a lot of interest, a lot of conversation. I know my colleagues and I have received numerous emails, both opposed and in favor, and to those of you that have sent them, thank you very much. We appreciate hearing that. Jennifer will present the people that will be making the presentation. After the presentation is concluded, we will open it up for public comment, and I have all your slips here, so I will be calling on you. We're going to request that you hold your comments to three minutes or less, because we want to make sure that we allow as many people as we can to be able to speak. If you want to talk about something else that's not in this agreement, please don't. If you hear someone come up to the podium and state what you wanted to say, please just say it's been stated and you concur. When you do come to the podium, again, even though I have your name here, we're going to ask you to introduce yourself, so that we can have the recording of your name, so when the minutes are done. So, again, there is no action item on this study session today. However, after the comments have been made, the board will go into executive session to address some of those comments and see if the agreement that's there, the draft agreement, is fine the way it is, or if there has to be any changes to the agreement. Again, thank you so much for being here. I would ask, too, that you show some decorum. Please, no cheering or jeering. We like to conduct a professional meeting here, and once we've concluded, then, again, the board will hear the public comments. At the end, the board will make some final comments before we convene into executive session. So, with that, Ms. St. John, would you please present our group of distinguished presenters today?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and members of the public. I also want to thank you all for being here today and for your interest in this topic. As Supervisor Reese mentioned, we're at the study session today to hear about the proposed dedication of 134 acres of Arizona minerals, who also be referred to as AMI or South 32 throughout this presentation, owned land to the county for the purpose of a public park. As part of the proposed land dedication, AMI is reserving an easement on the land it proposes to dedicate for the purpose of building a temporary road. The county is not granting an easement for the temporary road to cross any property currently owned by the county. AMI's road will connect to existing public rights of ways. The county and AMI will seek public input for the design of the park. We believe this park can be designed and developed in such a manner as to promote recreational opportunities, facilitate land preservation, and enhance flood protection. So, with that being said, a brief background. I'd like to introduce our two presenters, Melanie Lawson, the community specialist from South 32, who will be presenting first, and Rob Lane, a consultant for the county that works in our... as our project manager within our Public Works Department. And as Supervisor Reese mentioned, will take input and questions following the end of the entire presentation. So, thank you, Melanie.
All right. Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors and county staff. Thank you for your time today. As Jennifer mentioned, my name is Melanie Lawson, and I'm the community specialist for South 32. Just give the presentation a minute to pop up. All right. Do you have a clicker, or should I? Okay, go ahead. So, I'll start by covering the route study and provide an overview of the engagement on this project that we've done to date. I'll begin with the early public engagement that South 32 started when they acquired the project in 2019. The goal of the route study is to find a way to move concentrate from Hermosa to market, and we want to do so avoiding the town of Patagonia and the downtown pedestrians and narrow roadways. And in general, we do want to minimize impacts to the community. An internal team of South 32 employees and consultants worked on a route study to evaluate all of the different options. The criteria here on the right were presented to the county and the community in September of 2019. We evaluated the various routes against these criteria and began a process of elimination. We also considered other agencies and their management plans, like the U.S. Forest Service Transportation Management Plan. I do have a slide that shows all the different routes that were considered, but we did receive a lot of questions, in particular about Soldier Basin, which was evaluated, but it, like many of the other routes, it would require an extensive amount of new U.S. forest disturbance, plus negotiations with private landowners. Go ahead. So, continuing with some of the engagement, we've been engaging with the community since we acquired the project in 2019. One of the initial steps we took was to conduct a community baseline assessment, where traffic and transportation did emerge as one of the top concerns. And it's rightfully so. The community is concerned about possible impacts that traffic can have on quality of life, like noise, dust, and visual impacts. In late 2019 and 2020, we began holding open house events in the community to share information about the project and also gather additional feedback. In 2020, before we extended the timeline for the study, we did not have a short-term and long-term route solution. Instead, we just had one solution, which we shared with the community around August of 2020. And that solution was the paved, permanent road connecting Harsaw to State Route 82. We attempted to get feedback from neighbors on ways to mitigate impacts, such as planting trees to cut down on noise, and we discussed park amenities to preserve quality of life, such as trails, path lighting, and dogway stations. We did put this plan on hold. As everyone knows, the pre-feasibility study timeline was extended, and it gave us extra time to go back and do additional work on the route study. While that was taking place, we also formed the Santa Cruz County Advisory Panel to the South 32 Hermosa Project, where, again, traffic and transportation emerged as a key concern. In late 2021, we did communicate a plan for a short-term temporary route and a longer-term, more permanent route. We did communicate the short-term route with the temporary design to the neighbors that lived in the immediate area. That temporary design includes less earthwork and no paving. We also discussed possible park amenities again at that time, and the majority of feedback was to keep those to a minimum and not include any lighting or anything that would continue to impact the neighbors in the area. We also discussed ultimately keeping the road as a recreational trail or reclaiming the road and leaving the area as designated open space. These ideas can be revisited during planning and construction of the road, not at the end of the Hermosa project life, but if approved, we can begin planning for some of those and discussing the additional park features, or lack thereof, in greater detail. Go ahead. So, this map shows the eight main routes that were evaluated during the route study. The thick blue line in the middle is State Route 82. The town of Patagonia is near the top of the map. The Hermosa site is the purple polygon that's there in the middle. The short- and long-term routes are highlighted with the green rectangles. Short-term, we're proposing Harsaw Road to a temporary road in the Cross Creek area. Longer-term, we're proposing Flux Canyon, which will require improvements and approval through a federal permitting process. Go ahead. So, as I've mentioned, we're proposing a temporary road. We've changed the design from what was proposed initially in mid-2020. We are looking at the temporary design with minimal permanent improvements. We're looking at reduced earthwork that more closely follows the contours of the road. We also will plan to have a low speed limit on the road, which will help with noise and vibration, and the road will be a stabilized base that will help with dust control. It will not be paved. This plan keeps heavy truck traffic outside of the town of Patagonia, which is in line with the community preference. It removes traffic away from pedestrians that are walking downtown and also the school traffic. We have completed cultural surveys on the property, and the road design will not impact any cultural sites. We can also mitigate noise impacts with reduced speed, as I mentioned, and also through the use of electric vehicles, which we plan to use to haul concentrate. The engagement and feedback that we've done to date gave us the basis for this agreement and the proposal to take forward to the county. By transferring property to the county and beginning to work on some of the park amenities now, it reinforces the long-term goal of recreational use or conservation. We do understand, though, that many of the residents in the area would like minimal amenities or amenities that are more in line with a natural scenic park, and we will have a public process for designing and including any amenities, which, again, we can begin upon approval of the agreement. The process will also include feedback from the advisory panel and direct feedback from the neighbors. So, some information on logistics. We have received a lot of questions regarding the volume of traffic that will be on the road, and what's on the screen here refers to concentrate traffic. Production is projected to start at Hermosa in fiscal year 2027, but concentrate traffic is substantially less than what was previously rumored. Initially, there will be less than 30 concentrate trucks per day. This will increase over time, peaking around 80 trucks per day. These numbers refer to trucks leaving Hermosa. They will return, but it's not necessarily accurate to double that number and assume that's what will be on the road in a 24-hour period. As I mentioned, we will have empty trucks returning to Hermosa, but there will be staging, idling, and because the trucks will be electric and not diesel, there will also be charging time that is required. We compiled baseline traffic data to evaluate the increases in vehicle volumes, and we completed a preliminary traffic management study with Kimley Horn in 2020. Referring to concentrate traffic only, routing traffic east initially on State Route 82 and then north on 83 to Tucson would result in an average of 4% increase in vehicles on the road. I do want to reiterate that South 32 continues to support the development of a multimodal inland port in Santa Cruz County. We are funding the market analysis, and we continue to support the grant efforts for the feasibility study. And this port can provide additional economic benefit for the county. As I mentioned, we do plan to use electric trucks, which will reduce noise and emission impacts. On the screen here is an example of both the electric semi-truck cab and the fully sealed rotator, which will be used to transport concentrate. And so, this can give you an idea of what we plan to use on the road. The exact size of the truck and the rotator will be finalized, but it's roughly 20 feet long and eight feet wide, so it looks like the standard shipping containers that we see every day on the highway. So, getting the concentrate to market means that the minerals can be used to address climate change. Zinc is used for battery storage for renewable energy. Lead is used for electric vehicle batteries. Silver is coating on solar panels, and manganese is also a critical mineral for electric vehicle batteries, steel, and used by the U.S. military. Zinc and manganese have recently been federally designated as critical minerals and are critical to U.S. supply chain for national security. The U.S. is dependent on foreign sources for some of these minerals. For manganese specifically, the U.S. completely relies on China. So, Hermosa can have a positive economic impact on Santa Cruz County. Ernst &amp; Young recently completed an economic impact and tax contribution analysis to provide both state and county economic benefits. The study is available on our website. I have the web address on the next screen, and the inputs to the model are listed here on the right. So, South 32 provided estimated headcounts, payroll data, capital expenditure, and estimated operational information. Ernst &amp; Young used the 2019 M-Plan economic model to produce the estimated economic impact to both Santa Cruz County and the state of Arizona. So, the report, again, is available on our website. The report is the first document under the heading titled "Public Presentations," and the web address is here on the screen. It breaks down the information into two separate periods. There's the construction period and the operation period. The construction numbers are for the entire construction period, which is estimated from July 2022 through July 2027. The operation numbers are the potential annual contributions for a typical year of operations. So, the information is also broken out by direct contributions and then also indirect and induced contributions. The report also recognizes that there are expenses associated with potential growth, and that's factored into the report. There's an estimated positive net fiscal impact of $3.5 million annually to Santa Cruz County. So, lastly, here's a timetable for project development. We're currently developing water pumping infrastructure for Hermosa. Activity onsite is ramping up, and it's creating additional opportunities and jobs and contracts with suppliers. The study work in further engineering will continue over this next year, and we anticipate a final investment decision in mid-2023, and it'll kick off a major financial investment of $1.7 billion. From 2023 to 2025, we will sink shafts for underground exploration, and at this time, we anticipate to employ about 400 people directly. The period that follows is a construction period, continuing to build site infrastructure. This construction will employ about 600 people directly. The target production date, as I mentioned, is fiscal year 2027, and we expect to employ about 500 to 600 employees directly long-term. We will hire from Santa Cruz County as much as possible, and we know that we can grow the local workforce. Currently, from our site-based employees at Hermosa, 64% live in Santa Cruz County, and those are employees, again, that just work at the Hermosa site. That doesn't include our Tucson office. So, in closing, I want to emphasize that this agreement allows us to stay within this timeline. The proposal... ...creation or conservation use of the area... ...in the early years, and we believe that we can mitigate the impacts. Do more and also ensure compliance with county and ADOT requirements. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Ruiz, members of the board.
Good morning.
My name is Robert Lane, Rob Lane. I'm a senior engineer at Solis Engineering Company. I'm a consultant for Santa Cruz County, and I work as a project manager over a series of projects. And I'm here to discuss the proposed cooperative agreement. Some of the agreement items. AMI currently owns the 134 acres. It's over eight parcels. They're proposing to deed the land to Santa Cruz County for use as a public park. This is specific wording from there, to provide nature-based recreation. We've also added low-key trailway, promote open space, conservation, and flood control management. The park will be planned, designed, constructed, and maintained via funding from AMI. Planning and design will incorporate a public input process. It also incorporates cooperation with nonprofit entities to enhance preservation, restoration, or conservation of the land within the park. Next slide, please. This is a proposed... An image of the... From the draft agreement, showing the two connections. AMI will reserve a temporary, non-exclusive easement via a deed restriction. That deed restriction will last for 30 years, with 10-year extensions after the fact. It's to plan, design, construct, maintain, and use of a low-volume local rural road. As stated, the road would connect to ADOT Public Right-of-Way at SR82 down in the lower left and to the old Harsaw Road right-of-way, as shown on this exhibit. If AMI retained ownership of the land, it would not have to request the easement, and it would move forward using a floodplain use permit and driveway permits and still engage with ADOT for their connection to SR82. Next slide, please. One of the questions is, what is a trailway? What is the overall idea? And that question really will be up to the public as we go through this process. What does the public want to see? I looked all over the country for different types of trailways that incorporated nature, either through hiking trails or bike paths. There were many examples. I thought one of the closest ones was the Patagonia Sonora Creek Preserve, which has hiking trails in it and also is a conservation area. Again, these are all different types, different ways that land can be used. AMI is deeding the property to the county for the purpose of creating this low-key trailway type of park to create a buffer for the town, as well as open-spaced land conservation, to maintain the character of the community as an eco-tourist-friendly locale. Should be noted that in the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, Santa Cruz County Comprehensive Plan, the overall idea is to keep the areas similar in nature. So, part of that, there's a lot of open space, and that's something that the county is looking at and has agreed, why they've agreed to accept or look at this donation now. That is the end of my presentation.
Jennifer.
No, sir. That's the end of the presentation, Supervisor, so...
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and begin to call people up here. I must apologize to Vice Mayor Sabil from Town of Patagonia. Thank you for being here. Councilman Malonado, thank you for joining us as well. I saw Alfredo Velazquez, our county superintendent here. I know Ron, the manager for Town of Patagonia. Thank you for joining us here today. I don't see any other electeds in...
Pablo.
Oh, our assessor, Pablo Ramos. I see a couple of my colleagues from the school board, President Rojas and member Dr. Varona. So, with that, I will go ahead and... Our first speaker, remember, you have three minutes. Again, if someone has stated what you wanted to, you can come up and say you agree with the person that spoke. That way, we can move it along. So, Alfredo Velazquez, would you please come to the podium, sir?
Good morning, Chairman Ruiz, Supervisor Muletta, Supervisor Bracker, Ms. St. John, and Ms. Hunley, members of the community. On behalf of Santa Cruz County School Superintendent's Office and the educational communities of Santa Cruz County, I would like to thank South 32, especially Mr. Paul Reisner, Mr. Greg Lucero, Ms. Melanie Lawson, for their invaluable partnership. Their commitment and dedication to the students of this county has been evident through their continued support of several programs in our schools. Over the last several years, South 32 has sponsored a middle school after-school program called Tecnoclo Chicas, which is a coding program for young Hispanic girls, a robotics elementary after-school program for third and fifth graders, summer programs promoting STEM-related activities, and most recently, an early childhood robotics program for toddlers and their parents. During the COVID pandemic, they supported our schools and families through the most difficult time by donating laptops to the schools throughout the county to help students do their schoolwork online. They have also been one of the biggest supporters of the Santa Cruz County Teacher of the Year Event that recognizes and highlights educators for their outstanding teaching. South 32 has advocated for vocational programs in our high schools to promote post-secondary educational opportunities for our high school students, as well as internships. I'd like to thank South 32 for providing these educational opportunities for our students, teachers, and families in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Velazquez. Next is Ms. Carolyn Schaefer.
Greetings, everyone, and thank you for being here today. I am Carolyn Schaefer, a taxpaying resident and voter living in or near Patagonia for 26 years. One of my community activism roles is as chairperson of the Town Flood and Flow Committee. Since the proposed industrial road will be located in a floodplain, what effects will the road have on the watershed? And what knowledge does the community, town, and county have about potential damage or contamination due to flooding or the release of chemical fuel or concentrate? And what mitigation plans are established for such events? Why not wait until the county has much more information about the impact of this industrial road and the broader view of impacts to the health and welfare of residents from this proposed major industrial activity? Please do not ignore your voters and rush through a decision that many people do not believe is in the best interest of the residents of Santa Cruz County. We are at a choice point, and we, the people, ask you, our elected officials, to please slow down and listen to the people's opinion on the future of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Now, Gary, I can't read your last name, but it says Ford at the end. So, please, sir, you're next. Thank you.
My name is Gary Rutherford. I'm co-owner of La Frontera Realty in Patagonia. I'm a resident in Patagonia. I, as a Realtor, have a couple of questions about the land itself. There's a... There are two parcels on the northern end that are not included, and I'm wondering why on that. The... AMI owns them, but they're not included in the proposed grant... Granted land. Do you see the land I'm talking about on the northern end? It has the well site on it. It's like about 20 acres or so.
Can you go ahead and answer that? Can you go ahead and answer that, Melanie, please?
Yes, so you can see the well site. That well site is something that we would like to retain. It's a well that we're looking at that could maybe provide some benefit to the Red Rock Acres area. So we would just like to retain ownership of that so that we can maybe use it to benefit that neighborhood in the future.
El Paso Gas has a line running through this property. Have you spoken with El Paso about potential hazards of breaking that line underground with these heavy trucks?
I can turn it over to Raul. We have been in talks with the utility company.
Yes, we have spoken and met with Kinder Morgan, who is the owner of the gas line, and we have, are working with him on the preliminary plan so we can build that road and not impact their gas line.
On the land itself, these are, there are eight parcels that are currently still residential land. And what would the proposal be for the county to accept that residential land and then convert it to parkland? The impact there would be, of course, taxes.
Right, so that is the intent, is to turn it over to the county for a natural park.
And then the other issue would be, if the county accepted that, then are there funds available to maintain it?
Yes, so there are funds in the agreement. What's outlined currently in the agreement is a minimum of $150,000. South 32 will pay to install the park amenities for the park.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chuck Kling, I can't make out your name. I'm glad you're sitting right in front, sir. Thank you.
And for the record, Chuck Klingenstein. And I'm a resident voter living in the greater Patagonia area. I share with you and the county attorney the following citation from the Arizona Revised Statutes 12-820.03, and this is for reference now and definitely in your executive session. And here's my question. Have the county supervisors and the county legal staff assessed the county's and their personal liabilities exist under Arizona Revised Statute 12-820.03, which requires the county to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the traveling public, including residents, visitors, tourists, pedestrians, bicyclists, motorcyclists, federal agents, and horse riders? This land donation with an easement enables the establishment of an industrial road. How you can evaluate the safety consequences of this road without first having a detailed transportation plan from South 32 detailing all the uses of the proposed road, types of trucks, buses, cars, service vehicles, service semis, and the like? The daily numbers, the trip generation numbers, so intersections can be safely designed, assuming they can be, and this will hold true also for the state. Like you, I'm a taxpayer, voter, concerned citizen, and like you, I do not have enough knowledge at this time without, without understanding the ramifications of what I would be making a decision as. And I give this to you after 22 years in public office as an elected and appointed official. Until we all fully understand the safety and liability impacts of this road, we should take no further action to accept this questionable donation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, I think, so Kim, did you note the citation the gentleman talked about?
I did, Mr. Ruiz, and I have pulled it up on our, on my legal software. I'll be happy to discuss that with you in executive session.
Thank you, Kim. Terry Shannon, Jr.
Good morning. My name's Terry Shannon, Jr. I am the president of the Nogales, Santa Cruz County Economic Development Foundation. I came really prepared to speak very highly about the project, but Supervisor Ruiz has kind of confined us down to the, actually, just the land question. And as a parent, you know, I understand the impacts that this project's gonna, gonna bring to all of our communities, but in the end, having parks and recreational areas is something that I always dreamed about and I think really lacks in our, in our communities. And I think that South 32 has worked very hard at being good neighbors and stewards in trying to work with all the different entities involved. And for that reason, my group supports the route and the proposed ideas for the area. I'm sure there'll be things that'll be changing as it goes along, but in general, we support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Chamberlain, Jaime.
Good morning, Chairman Ruiz, and members of the Board of Supervisors. For the record, my name is Jaime Chamberlain, and I appear before you as the chairman of the Greater Nogales, Santa Cruz County Port Authority. Our unwavering mission has been to promote our ports of entry system while improving the quality of lives of the residents of the community through major infrastructure projects. We have a track record that spans over 17 years in promoting hundreds of millions of dollars investments in our community. Projects like the modernization of SR-189, which was just completed, and thank you, supervisors, for attending the opening. It was a great event. We are continuously looking for what's next for our community. And we are looking for ways to diversify our regional economy, for ways to attract new investments, for ways to attract new jobs, and for ways to diversify the opportunities for our workforce and for ways to make Arizona, Nogales, and Santa Cruz County better. Nogales grew up around a rail stop on the border, and then it became one of the largest hubs for fresh produce in North America. It's evolved to be a cross-border retail magnet, and today it is a bi-national, state-of-the-art manufacturing center for the maquiladora industry. With these areas of economic activity remain prominent to various degrees, we have before us the potential to harness the next magnet of investment, job creation, economic diversification, and workforce development, and that is mining. South 32 and their billion-dollar investments in our community offer us the opportunities to be on the leading edge of an essential component of the global economy. We have engaged with South 32 on many fronts. Since arriving in the community, South 32 has been a very, very generous corporate citizen. They have made substantial donations to multiple charities and community endeavors, and allow me to highlight one of their particular endeavors, which was to make substantial contributions to support the county's COVID-19 vaccination efforts, which without them would have been very, very difficult, and we literally saved thousands of lives. We have all driven the remnants of previous mining operations outside of Green Valley, Saguarita, and simply stated, they're ugly, and they're not pretty. This is what we're so excited to work with South 32 and their visionary leadership, from investing tens of millions of dollars to remediate legacy contaminated water issues, to the steadfast commitment to being the first carbon-neutral mine in North America, to the day-to-day work that they have with our community college district to create training, certification, and degree programs that will help the county citizens fill jobs at the mine. I believe that as long as South 32 is committed to embracing these innovative, substantial, and visionary approaches to mining, we should work to find ways to support their investments, and by working together, we can also hold them accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jaime. Appreciate it. Ann Goslin. Ann Goslin.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. I'm Ann Goslin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am a retired attorney. I am a homeowner and a taxpayer in, in the county, in the greater Patagonia area. Thank you for having this study session. I came to discuss very specifically the proposed dedication, as Chairman Ruiz requested. I want to say that there are a lot of larger issues being raised in these discussions. There's a recent study that came out on the nature-based and restorative economy in Santa Cruz County, and some of the raises issues of trade-offs. As this discussion goes much more, becomes much more broad than the discussion of the dedication, I ask that you keep your minds open that there needs to be much more discussion of that, because most of us came to discuss solely the dedication issue. And on that particular point, I would ask you to consider, why would the county accept this donation when it would extinguish the rights of Santa Cruz residents to participate in rezoning and re-subdivision processes in the future? And the reason I ask this is that the future of this road is very uncertain. We looked at the documents that came out five-ish last night, and there is no definition of, there's no endpoint for when this road will cease to exist, other than when permits are granted for an alternative route. There is no guarantee that those permits will ever be granted. And with that in mind, it's quite possible that AMI and South 32 will be back here asking to make this road permanent. And if this road, the road that the arterial will go along, remained in private hands, then the county's subdivision and rezoning processes, which give significant rights to county residents, would remain in place. If, however, the county accepts the land that the road is going to be on, then those rights for citizens will be extinguished. And we ask that you not take that step now and only consider acceptance of the donation the land would be on in the event that this road is actually decommissioned. And I'm done in three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
Thank you.
Can we switch glasses? Is it Jack Poldori? You're next, sir.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Jack Poldori.
Oh, Dory, I couldn't read your.
No problem. My, it's my wife's writing.
Okay, we'll blame, we'll blame it on the wife.
She'll throw me under the bus later.
You may be sleeping outside tonight, sir.
My time is gone, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I rise just to give you a different view, literally, of this situation. My wife, my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, and I have been landowners in Patagonia since 1995. On the property we have right now, it's vacant land. It's horse country. We're the hill over, I believe, east of Red Rock Acres. The Lewis Family Horse Farm is just below us on the flats going into Ruby Canyon. It's my view. It's our view. We're looking down across at the red, great red mountain. The trucks are gonna be going past us. I worked with Bo and Caleb Lewis this past year to bring electricity to the property because we were gonna build a house finally after 25 years of saving. Put a halt to the project. I bothered to do some of my homework. I've read the memorandum of law that had been submitted in front of the Water Quality Advisory Board, and I'm thinking about ingress and egress, moving product to market, as I believe the company representative said today. I'm thinking about the long term, which is the short term. The strategic importance of zinc, clearly, in our national security. This is on everyone's mind. Let's be honest here. But I'm also a guy that has stopped putting in a well, because leverage is important in policymaking and in politics. You know that as well as I do. I've been in politics a while myself, and I'm looking at what your leverage is here to compel the company to deal with the issues with respect to water quality, the proper benchmarking, water quality treatment, dispersion, overtime, everything that's been outlined in the memorandum of law, which I hope you all have taken the time to read. I trust you have. And I'd ask you to use that in a positive way, this word leverage, because now is the time, you know, my mom used to say, don't look a gift horse in the mouth, but we're in horse country. And when you look down the throat of that gift, you're supposed to be looking at the teeth, but you also want to be making sure you're not looking down the throat of the Trojan horse. So the point we're at now is one of leverage. And you, charged with advocacy for all taxpayers, not just economic development and all the benefits that the company has given to the schools, which has been discussed this morning, but to get the best deal possible for the treatment of water quality, the dispersions from the, from the two sites, the water treatment facilities, because frankly, folks, put yourself in my position, and let's go back to my view on that hill. I want to drop a well, and I'd be a damn fool to do that right now. So thank you for your time, and I wish you the Holy Spirit, as we say in the Catholic faith, as you make your decisions moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, Marian Vendavoli? Did I get that right? Vended, see? Good morning.
Good morning, Marian Vendatuli. I'm here speaking as a private citizen, but also as editor of the PRT, and some of my remarks are based on the research we've been doing recently. And also as a resident of Elgin, who's gonna be severely impacted by this route. This statement that South 32 makes, that this will have minimal impact on local communities, quite frankly, is incorrect. The mere 30 trucks a day that they refer to, maybe it isn't doubled, but it's certainly a much bigger number than that. It ignores the buses. It ignores the materials going back and forth. It's going to be a huge impact on our road. The low-volume local rural road doesn't take place in a vacuum. We have to, you have to consider the impacts that have not been defined yet on Route 82 and Route 83. I'm not asking you to reject this. I'm asking you guys to take a step back, take your time. There's no hurry for you to make this decision and take these properties off our tax rolls and give up the control that you would have here. In our conversations with the state ADOT Encroachment Management Director, Richard Lapierre, several troubling issues have been raised about the study that needs to be done, not just in those intersections where this joins Route 82. He says this study has to go from there to Tucson and to Nogales. That's a lot of work, and there are many, many issues to be resolved before those roads are safe enough for us. Rob Lane at the Open House told one of my reporters that it's being suggested that the traffic be split to minimize the concentration on the road. Maybe 50/50 go north out of the Cross Creek Connector, 50/50 go south, maybe 60/40. That's gotta be determined. You also have to consider what's gonna happen if those trucks come out north of Patagonia, head through Patagonia to go to Nogales, past our schools, past all those businesses, the increased traffic. I don't know if any of you guys have spent any time in Patagonia lately. It's already booming. It's already an hour wait at a restaurant, for instance. There is a lot of traffic, and it's an accident waiting to happen. Look at the bicycles that are going through now. So noise and visual impacts are not the only things that need to be considered here. And you can't consider just this dirt, what is it, low-level rural, local rural road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Vanessa Register?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Neighbors. My name's Vanessa Register. I'm a resident of the Lake Patagonia area. I would like to ask why this was just a proposed land donation on the agenda, and yet Hermosa 32 talks about the road, the road, the road, the road, the road. So if these items are not separate, they should not be separate on our agenda. And putting the MOU on at 5:00 p.m. the night before gives us zero time to prepare for today. And that's why this was removed in January, because it was misrepresented. South 32 Hermosa community awards $70,000 to Santa Cruz nonprofits, 322 this year. I think that's great. I like a company that gives back to the community and works with us. But the easement, not guaranteed yet, is a necessary part of their project in the Patagonia Mountains. Why aren't they keeping the land and putting the road in? Personally, no amount of goodwill can replace our water. I've spoken with Hermosa 32. I've attended their meetings. Their monitoring of our water has nothing in writing. When the people lose their well water, there's nothing in writing. It's, we're good neighbors. And I appreciate good neighbors, but I've been alive long enough to know that a handshake does not hold up in a court of law. It is very hard to have specific comments when the agenda didn't have the information I needed. I'm asking that this be fixed based on the open meeting law that Arizona has. Agendas must contain information necessary to inform the public so that matters can be discussed. You know, it's ARS 38 431 dot oh nine. A corporation agreement or an MOU should be available on the website at least the 24 hours ahead of time. I asked to be informed of emails. I was told that you do not inform people of emails when things go out. I saw in the newspaper, the Nogales International, that 94 people got informed. Why wasn't I one of them? I sent emails asking. I made phone calls, and I came to the January meeting asking. I sent emails asking why I wasn't. Oh, we had your wrong email. But I've had email correspondence with the department that sent these out. This is not okay. I am asking, one, that the agenda be complete before 24 hours, that the two components of land grant, of donating land and granting the road be connected as they are, and that is an open space passive park. This is not one. I have written general plans. I have installed open space. I have designed parks. This is not one with a road going through with 30 trucks, and I'm sorry if they go in, they go out. Your numbers have to double. That is normal with your, when you do environmental impact. If you look at their numbers, you see that.
Thank you, Ms. Register.
Thank you.
Can you do me a favor, please? Write your email on here so that we, there will be no mistake. You'll get an email. The other thing, too, just, this is a study session. It is not an agenda. It's not a regular meeting agenda. Those have exactly what you've stated on there. And Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, when we send out our regular meeting agendas, all information that is pertinent to what is going to be discussed is put on those agendas, as per the statute that was cited.
This is just a meeting to hear from the public and to hear the presentations. There is not what's called an action item on the agenda today. And so that's why we provided the document as soon as it was available. Obviously, that's still ongoing, and it will still be ongoing after today, just so everyone's clear. That's the purpose of this meeting, is to take everyone's input. We'll have an executive session following the study session today, where the board will direct staff if they want any changes to that agreement. Folks, we'll have another opportunity to speak when we post this item as an action item, when there's a final proposed document. For now, we just have a draft.
Thank you, Kim. Ron Pulliam? Thank you, Ms. Register.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here today. I am a resident of, I'm Ron Pulliam. I'm a voter, a taxpayer, a longtime permanent resident of Santa Cruz County. I thank the county supervisors, and I share with you a deep commitment to the health and safety of our citizens and our community, and our commitment to the protection of the environment, as I know you do as well. I'm also a business owner and a board member of a major employer in the county. I have to admit that when I saw the numbers this morning, $3.5 million of net economic impact, presumably direct and indirect, our little organization is not a billion-dollar organization, but we're spending well over $3.5 million in direct economic impact this year in Santa Cruz County. So what you're doing is looking at one organization that has billions of dollars of reserves and resources, that spends a very tiny fraction of its revenue in the county. So I'm deeply concerned about this industrial road proposal, and I think it is an industrial road proposal that will last at least 10 years, perhaps 30 years, and is not a proposal about a park. So here's my question. Are you certain that you have fully considered the impacts of this road on the sacred native burial grounds? And we can discuss that later. There are sacred native burial grounds very close to the site, cultural artifacts, and endangered species known to be on or near the proposed route. And are you willing to assume legal responsibility for allowing the project to proceed? Thank you very much. Borderlands Restoration Network and Wildlife Quarters. And together, we have a budget of over $3.5 million.
Melanie?
Entirely in the county.
Can you address the gentleman's concern on the burial ground?
Yes. So we have done, we have done cultural surveys on the property, and the road does not impact any cultural sites.
I do not believe that is entirely true. We know there are buried burial sites within 200 feet of the proposed route, and they were discovered by building a construction site. And when you get your bulldozers in there, I think you may be very surprised.
And we do use tribal monitors and have a tribal monitoring program for any of that. And so I think we can maybe connect with you after and get the exact location that you're looking at, because our cultural surveys did not indicate that the road impacts any cultural sites.
Okay. I just would ask you to keep that as an open question.
So if you could share your information with her, then you guys can make sure that that's taken care of. Thank you. Lynn Davidson? And folks, while Lynn comes up to the podium, to all the people on Zoom, as soon as we're done hearing from the people here in the boardroom, I'll go ahead and open it up to you guys. We haven't forgotten you, so please be patient, and then we'll listen to your comments and concerns as well. So with that, Ms. Davidson, please. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Chairman Ruiz and other members of Supervisors. I'm very pleased that you are having this session this morning. I think it's important, and I hope you're going to take seriously what you hear from all of us. My name is Lynn Davison. I'm a resident of Patagonia. I pay property taxes, and I vote in Santa Cruz County. My questions are really related to the easement for the road, which I agree with a former speaker. It can't really be separated from the park. So the biggest question I have is why do you need to act now, the county, act now on this? What is moving you to act at this point? There are so many unanswered questions. There are a number of places where questions have been asked. There are no answers to them. We currently have a letter to South 32 that talks about, I think we had over 30 questions, that we hope will be answered. Supervisors had a copy of that letter. And without the kind of information that you would expect to have before making this decision, you are creating some risk for the residents of this county. So why can't South 32 build their industrial road on the land they own? Why does this have to take place now? What, as regards the easement, it's unusual to see an easement like this one. Easements are usually for construction purposes. They usually are a pretty limited length of time. In the materials we got last evening, 30 years with an option for 10-year extensions. That doesn't sound very temporary to me. I wonder, under what statute is the county able to make that kind of a temporary easement? And I really encourage you to look at that before you take action. In closing, I would just say, what's the hurry? Get the information you need before you make any decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. And I believe you mentioned a letter that I saw yesterday for the first time that was sent by our attorney, that was sent to Mr. Reisner. I never got it on my email, because I was asked point-blank. I never saw it until yesterday. And I think some of the concerns that were mentioned in that letter, I think, were taken into consideration, I believe, when they were drafting this agreement. So just a little bit of clarification on that, but I had not seen it until yesterday. So Melanie?
Yes, and we will get a response back on the letter. I believe the date you put in the letter was April 16th, and so we're addressing some of those questions today, and then you will get a written response as well.
Kat Crockett?
Good morning.
Good morning.
To all. It is still morning.
It is still morning.
I am Kat Crockett. I'm a resident of Elgin, where my husband and I have retired and fulfilled our dream with a beautiful vineyard in that area. I want to start by saying, I can't believe we're rushing to make an uninformed decision about a park that will not be viable for 30 or more years. And I may even be dead by then. Why are we not talking about the roads? That's the key issue before we talk about things that happen in the future. But we're talking about a park, and we're opening up the issue of roads, and I suggest we reconsider and have a study session about there. I want to address this, the mine's potential transportation pro plan, and the impact that it will have across businesses and for the citizens countywide. I'm not happy about the late notification. To me, it's like having a book club meeting, and as soon as everybody gets to the meeting, you give them the book they should have read. This is not informed. This disadvantages honest discussion when we don't have the content of what is supposed to be discussed. Moving on to the roads, we depend on these rural roads for all of our commuting. And in the eastern part of Santa Cruz County, there are only two roads for ingress and egress, and that is State Route 82 and State Route 83. And the mine is proposing not just their ore truck traffic, but all the other ancillary vehicles that have been mentioned by others and many more on these roads, to the extent we don't even know what that volume's going to be, and we should, before we rush into decisions. We have to evaluate the impact of the mine throughout the county. There are, move right on here. As elected officials representing your constituents throughout the county, I urge you to delve deeper, listen to the people, and thoroughly study the impacts before you decide on a proposal or any future proposals submitted by the mine. Our communities have collectively worked hard to create what has become the Emerald Jewel of Santa Cruz County and our tourism, but, and perhaps the mining communities can coexist. I believe that. But we're a long way from figuring that out. In summary, the materials have been in these mountains for a very long time, and they're not going anywhere. They don't have an expiration date. The due diligence to our communities requires the mine adjust their timelines in order to preserve our communities. Then so be it. There is no advantage for the county to act on this matter now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crockett. Next speaker is Dr. Arnold Montiel.
Quickly, can I just address?
Yes, please.
A couple of things. So I, there's been some question about the park. The park will not sort of be designed 30 years from now. The planning process for that can begin immediately, and the park amenities can be put in sooner rather than later. It's not post-Hermosa project. It can begin now. Also, the end date, so in the agreement, there is some language. The end date in the agreement is 24 months after receiving authorization to begin construction on Flux Canyon Road. And then the additional traffic volumes. We are doing everything we can to reduce the amount of traffic on the roads. We are looking at park and rides for employee traffic. We're looking at lay-down areas to combine loads so that we can reduce traffic to the Hermosa site. Currently, we've been able to stay within the Town of Patagonia ordinance limits, the 100 trips per week, and so we'll continue to actively manage our traffic. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll let you just follow up real quickly, because our next speaker's up there.
I just want to know, Melanie, you're saying the park is going to be available before 30 years, but who is going to want to go to a park with truck traffic going up and down? And I wouldn't shoot my pigs there, my grannies, my dog. It makes no sense. I wouldn't want to eat a picnic lunch with massive construction and mining trucks going back and forth. So I don't see how it is viable until the mining operation ends. Thank you.
Doctor?
Thank you, Supervisor Reese. Mr. Mueller?
Good morning.
Mr. Bracker, good morning. I represent Santa Cruz Council on Aging, better known as Senior Center in Nogales. Eight years ago, Dr. Varona and I took on a commitment of 10 years to bring back the senior center in Nogales. It was due to close, and we made a commitment for those 10 years to make sure that that senior center didn't close. It's not closed. It's doing very well. We have over 300 active members in the senior community in Nogales. And part of that reason was in support of the mining industry, South 32. They have been very generous with their contributions to the center, and that has helped us. As you well know, in the senior center, it takes two months to get back our money, of the money that we spend. We have been doing away with excess stuff that was being used before, and now we can say that we're in good standing. But it is for the reason that South 32 has been amongst many other industries in Nogales, including the produce industry, which has been very, very generous to us. So I am fully support of 32, only because, and this is another story about the roads and everything else, but I'm here to say that South 32 has been very, very charitable to our community, and I thank them.
Thank you, Dr. Montiel. Mr. Guillermo Valencia?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Reese, members of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. My name is Guillermo Valencia, born, raised, and living here in Nogales, Arizona. I come before you to commend you on your efforts to support public participation. As you can see, we have a lot of participants here today, and to gather information and to be respectful of diverse viewpoints, so that an educated, informed decision on the issue at hand can move forward. To me, community engagement is essential to effective partnership and to more effective and more, and to more effective understanding and to mitigate community impacts. So, thank you for that community engagement. My personal position is that this donation of 134 acres should be approved and provide access to AMI for an easement on the land for the purpose of building a temporary road, especially given the fact that the local community has already restricted traffic by limiting the amount of vehicles traveling over Harsaw Road. I would hope that any individual or entity that owns property on this county would also have the right to petition to access its existing public rights of way as long as all conditions and requirements of existing standards are met. South 32 has demonstrated that it's committed to embracing good, sustainable, and visionary approach to mining. I believe the benefits of their investments in our larger community far outweigh any potential difference that we may have. Granted, like with any difficult decision, there are concerns to address and impacts to be considered. But I believe that any of these issues can be resolved by working together and effectively mitigating any community impact. Thank you once again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Valencia. Next is Councilman Jorge Maldonado.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you Supervisors, thank you everybody, public. You know, a lot of things have been said and, you know, in support, and I do support the mine. They have been very generous to our community. They do, you know, very well paying jobs, they trade the workforce, they enhance the education of the community. And they're open, they're open. Melanie, Pat, I know them personally, and they're open to work with everybody. And they're going to look at trying to do the best thing for the community, best thing for the town. You know, Town of Patagonia was, was having, you know, we used to go for 4th of July every year when we're in our youth. But you guys have brought Patagonia, in my way of looking at it, has brought back Patagonia to a boom, you know? And I think it's helping. I think it's going to help Nogales. I think it's going to help the county. And they're open to working together, just like the city is open to working with everybody. And, you know, like we're doing here, talking and getting and doing the things right. That's what we need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman. And Robin, and I mean, it starts with a K, and it's got Bird at the end. I can't read the three or four letters before, so I apologize.
Another German name, Robin Kullberg. Thanks for inviting us all. I just want to say that even though it's, this road isn't going to, I'm going to stick to the road again because that's what we're here for. So, even though the road is not paved, it's still an industrial road. And as such, going through residential areas undermines the South, the Santa Cruz County and Patagonia Town plans developed by consensus, consensus planning process by citizens. They don't favor an industrial road. Just another point that's been brought up, that was brought up in the plan that we received last night, 24 months after the Flux Canyon permit. We have no guarantee that South 32 is even going to apply for the permit, let alone when they're going to get it. So, to me, that's just, it's meaningless. It's, it's a, temporary is in quotes. And I just want to read a few points that this letter that the council member, or the board members received that was also, that was also, I'm so nervous I came. I hate doing this. That was also, that was originally sent to Pat Reisner, and that the county also received. Number one, has South 32 applied to ADOT for encroachment permit to access Route 82? I'm just going to list a few of these questions so that people know what was in this letter. And again, who will be traveling on this road? What the expected number of trips per day? That's still, to me, an open question. Third one would be, would the donation of the proposed, now 134, it was 70 acres, of South 32 relieve them of paying property taxes on the donated land? What's going to be carried, solid, liquid gas? What is the toxicity of the contents if spilled? And who would be paying for the cleanup? How does South 32 propose to mitigate the risk for the users of this road? Harsaw Road, that is. And then, have they considered that the Cross Creek connection goes over a critical or intersects with a critical wildlife corridor that state and federal agencies have recognized just north of Cross Creek Corridor? So, trucks will be passing through there. Couple more here. The residential property values of the people in that neighborhood will obviously be affected. How has, how will these homeowners be compensated for the reduced production in their assets? And a last one, how will a significant increase in traffic, in traffic on these routes? The traffic, travel time, that is. How are they going to, how is South 32 going to monitor this? And what are they going to do to address the significant increases in travel time? Thanks.
And Melanie, I think you had spoken to Ms. Davidson where you were in the responding, if you want to.
Yes, so we will reply to all of the questions in the letter. But to address a couple of those, we will apply to ADOT and will comply with all of the ADOT requirements. For the spilled material, we do have that sealed rotainer system and other design features to prevent any kind of spill. But if something did occur, South 32 would be responsible for cleaning anything up. But we're trying to reduce that risk ahead of time and have plans for mitigating that in the design. For open space dedication and, you know, our hope is that this provides some, some long-term benefit or assurance. We won't build anything else in that area. By giving the land to the county and having it as a park, there is assurance that we won't build or put anything else in that area. So hopefully, that can be the long-term benefit for residents. And there are things that, we will do a traffic study. There are things we can do to adjust our traffic, to minimize impact during the commute hours. These are all things that we can address when we do additional traffic studies. Tried to keep notes and hopefully covered some of those points. Thank you.
Okay, so that was the last of the speakers here. I don't have a slip for you, ma'am. You can come up here, following Neil. What is your name, ma'am? Are you Ann?
No, I'm Valerie. Ann came up.
I didn't call you Valerie Neal? I apologize, ma'am. Please come up. I think I turned it over together, so. I truly apologize. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Hi, I'm, thank you for doing this meeting. Thank you for calling my name. My name is Valerie Neal. I'm a resident of Red Rock Acres and Patagonia year-round, taxpayer and voter in the county. I basically have two questions, but before I say those, I'd like to say that today, we've heard some things that were not just about the road. And from all the people who are in favor of the project, it was all to do with South 32's generosity. And we all know about South 32's generosity. But I just ask you as Supervisors to think about the voters in this county as well and the impact that these things will have on us who do not have the financial resources of South 32. So, again, my, my thing would be, again, why are you considering this donation now? South 32 has said they're going to do traffic studies. Let's wait for those traffic studies. There's no rush to accept this donation at this point in time. They have the private land. They can start construction of the road. We don't have to accept this and take the land out of the property tax rolls. Once it's no longer using the road as a temporary road, then the county could accept it as a park or whatever public purpose the county sees fit at that time. Please take time. And this is not a rural road, a low, it, we are going to see this from Red Rock Acres. And the other thing I'd like to address right now is the right-of-way because this is the first time that South 32 has actually announced how it is going to access Harsaw Road. And it's along with the old, what's now called Red Cloud Lane. I don't know whether the Supervisors are aware that on the Public Works map for Santa Cruz County, Red Cloud Lane is shown as a private road owned by the individuals. Even if it, and that is still the case as of yesterday. Even if it is a county right-of-way, there is an ordinance, a right-of-way ordinance that was prepared by Santa Cruz County in 2013 that requires a permit for anyone wanting to build along the right-of-way. And that right-of-way requires that the application include traffic control plans and construction in accordance with the Maricopa Association of Governments specifications. Also, Red Rock Acres water line runs the entire length of Red Cloud Lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. And again, my apologies for turning it over too quickly. Okay, so on, do you have another one? Is that on Zoom?
Yes, so that one's on there.
Okay, so let's go to our Presidents on Zoom. The first one that I have is, and just for the record, Gary Paul, was it Nathan or Nabon?
Nabon.
Nabon left a comment on the chat box, so we'll take that in. He left a Zoom meeting. Next is Aaron, and is it Jason Butts?
Jason.
Huh?
Jason.
Jason? Oh, I'm sorry, it looked like a G, Jason Butts. So, sir, or ma'am, please, you have three minutes?
Thank you. Okay, so I'll speak on behalf of myself and Aaron. My name's Jason Boots, and I live at High Red Cloud Lane. The significance of that address is that it is the sole residential house that is on Red Cloud Lane. And now that I've seen the, the map that was disclosed, as far as, I believe the gentleman from the county showed where this route was proposed to go, that it would be going right in front of my driveway. And I just wanted to say first, why we moved here to this property in 2009 and have invested in it? Because it is a quiet and scenic place. We love the dark skies at night. We love the visitation of all the wildlife here. And in fact, we have planted a large number of native trees and shrubs and other plants to provide good quality habitat for the wildlife here. We really appreciate the landscape as it is, the beautiful views, and that's why we moved here and expect to stay here for a long time. So, this proposed, you know, I agree with what was said before as far as the, whatever's going to happen eventually, you know, park or otherwise, first what's going to happen is that this is going to be a road, a dirt road that goes right in front of our driveway. There will be severe direct impacts to us personally during the construction, heavy machinery. That means exhaust, oil leaks, noise, lights, obstruction of our driveway by vehicles, scaring off of the wildlife. There will be digging and earth moving, which means a lot of dust, disturbance possibly of gas, water, and power lines, tearing out of trees that we value for shade and plants that we value for pollinators. During the use of the road by the mine, there'd be high traffic across the front of our driveway. That would be during the peak, an ore truck on average every eight minutes right in front of our driveway. That includes traffic out and in because, as Lady said before, trucks have to get back to the mine in order to load up and come out again. Not to mention all the contract trucks. That can include heavy semis and such, employee vehicles and other support vehicles. There would be impacts with noise around the clock, headlights directed right into our windows, and dust from all those tires on the dirt road. So, I just wanted you to be aware that this would be a severe impact to us individually. And also, I'm a taxpayer and a voter here.
Thank you, Jason. Next is Howard, and is it Buchanan? I can't. Howard, are you on there?
Yes, thank you. I'm speaking as a private citizen. My family owns land in Santa Cruz County and lives in Santa Cruz County, and I work in Patagonia. I have a couple of points I'd like to make or reinforce, and then a question for any representative of South 32 that might be on the call. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. The point I have a problem with is the idea that this road is temporary. I am concerned that the idea that, or the premise that it is temporary is founded on the idea or the guarantee of that transportation through a corridor via Flux Canyon is guaranteed. And I just don't understand how this road can be called temporary when there is no other guaranteed route of ingress and egress. The other question I have is with regard to the matter of the motivation on the part of South 32 to make this donation. I, I don't see and would like to hear the rationale. What is, I'd like to know about the benefit to South 32 for making this donation as opposed to taking on the burden of maintaining this Cross Creek Connector Road on their own property. Thank you.
Melanie, you want to address that, please?
Yep, so as I mentioned before, South 32 will, will maintain the road at our expense. Our motivation behind it is, as I mentioned, to provide that sort of assurance or a third-party verification that we will not build anything else along this road. It will be open space. It could be an open space park. We can, we can do it on our, our private property, but by having the county park, there is that sort of assurance that there will not be other industrial activity or building or anything along the road in the area. Thank you.
Next is Quentin Luton.
Hi, this is Quentin Luton. My wife and I, Annie McGreevy, live in Sonoita. I did raise my two young boys in Patagonia as a single parent. I'm perplexed about the temporary nature of this industrial, rolling industrial zone in that it is wider as drawn. It is wider than State Route 82. The other part is, why is South 32 proposing to run their concentrate trucks, supposedly electric with containers, down this road? That doesn't sound very temporary to me. So, if the county is going to consider this road, then it should have then it should have a concluding date that the road is abandoned and turned back over to the county for the use as a so-called park, seeing as believing. I think South 32 has got a problem in that they know that they have to do an EIS to run their trucks down through Flux Canyon through the national forest. And I encourage the county supervisors to take their sweet time and use their leverage in examining this supposed temporary road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is David Robinson. Oh, excuse me. David, hold on a second. We're going to let Melanie answer that question, and then I'll go to you, sir.
I'll just address a couple of the points in there. So what's in the agreement are 12-foot travel lanes with two to three-foot shoulders. I'm not sure if that's exactly the same width as SR82, but that's the dimensions are in the agreement. The other thing to mention is I did mention the EIS, which is an environmental impact statement that is part of the federal permitting process that we are referring to for Flux Canyon. That is a public process. The U.S. Forest Service will hold public scoping and public comment periods during that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, I have one comment.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
I think you should take a tape measure and go out and measure State Route 82. Thank you.
Okay, so noted, sir. Now, David, it's your turn.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Robinson. I'm the conservation advocate for Tucson Audubon Society. Tucson Audubon owns and runs the Patent Center for Hummingbirds, which is a vital wildlife conservation site, as well as one of Arizona's most popular attractions for bird watchers and nature lovers, and also a major contributor to the economy of the town of Patagonia and of Santa Cruz County. Tucson Audubon has invested millions of dollars of our own and our community members' contributions in creating and running the Patent Center, and we are planning to invest millions more. We've also dedicated countless staff and volunteer hours to restoring degraded natural habitat in the area. So you can understand why we are very concerned about all of these developments regarding the mine. Like many of our Patagonian neighbors, Tucson Audubon is perplexed by and concerned about the supervisor's rush to move this land donation forward prior to having the scientific data necessary to understand and then prevent and/or mitigate the likely environmental impacts of the proposed roads on the city and county's water and on the habitats and humans who depend on that water. And just echoing what a couple of previous speakers have said, while we are very pleased about the philanthropic generosity of South 32 and what that's supported in the local community, we also want to emphasize that that is irrelevant to the discussion being had today. And so far, we have not heard, I have not heard, I will say, compelling argument justification for moving forward quickly on the proposed land donation. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And let's see, we have two more people here. They're ready. Oh, just one. Mary Teresa Schoolcraft, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm a resident of Patagonia and I live right in the heart of Patagonia. I have a background as a city planner. I have a master's in urban and regional planning. And one thing I would just really urge the County Board of Supervisors to look at is to think outside the box a little bit. Everybody's focused on this road and it's obvious how many impacts it's going to have in terms of trips and traffic and infrastructure and disturbing the natural area. And I'm really urging the board to request a feasibility study done by South 32 and AMI of the possibility of creating their own railroad spur. They're going to be using these roads to connect to rail transport of their ore. So it seems almost logical to me that maybe they would create their own railroad spur to connect to the existing railways. And you know, Patagonia has a long history with mining and cattle, and they did used to use rail here. And this is going to be a long-term investment, and so the cost of installing that, you know, if you amortize that over 50 years or however long they expect this mine to be in operation, they might find it very cost-effective. And also, if you actually put a monetary cost on the impact to all the people and plants and animals in the area, and not just assume that there's no cost to doing that, you might find out that it is economically feasible for them to create a railroad. And that would also create more jobs and be an existing improvement in the infrastructure. And I just really urge the county to take their time, really look deeply into the issue, and look at alternatives and not get so narrowly focused on this easement issue and donating this land. Seems to me that that just takes it off the tax roll and actually deprives the county of some income. But I appreciate the opportunity to testify, and I support the board in doing due diligence and taking their time and really looking at other options and other alternatives to just pushing these two roads through. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mary. And I think those are all the ones we have.
I can address the rail issue quickly. So we did look at rail to site as part of the route evaluation. It would require significant disturbance on U.S. Forest Service land, and that's why it was not a viable option. But with regard to rail, we do continue to support the inland port or multimodal facility with multiple other potential users in Santa Cruz County. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
I don't feel that that really addresses the economic impact at all. Thank you.
Was that you, Mary? Okay. So that concludes all the people that have submitted speaking requests. And on Zoom, I'm now going to turn it up to, turn it to my colleagues, and I'll start with Vice Chairman Bracker. Pardon me? Oh, I don't, do we have chats? And there was one there.
Yes, here we do. We're taking note of those. And Sonja has been communicating with them, and if they have questions, we'll get back to them on the chats.
So were you interested in what was said? Is that what you're asking, Ms. Neal? Can you just go ahead and read that for the record, please, because?
It's pretty long.
Oh, that's it. Long as it? Okay, is it up there?
Yep.
There they are. Yeah, just start at the beginning there. That's okay. I don't know if you can make them bigger or not. I can't see them. And even with my binoculars, I can't see them. Or maybe from here I can.
Could someone read them?
Yeah, so the first one is, says Essien, says, "Good morning. Thank you for joining." That's us, study session. Next one is Ruth Ann. To everyone, why isn't the video for the county coming through? That I don't know. The video will begin once the presentation begins. Thank you for your patience. If you have any questions during the meeting, please raise your hand, and we will call on you in the order they are received. If you would be so kind as providing your email address when asking a question in the chat box, so we can assure we address your questions. Thank you. We appreciate your time, and that's from ours. Then Quentin Luton went, "All is said and done, there must be an irrevocable end date for the use, the decommissioning, the abandonment, and the reclamation to a natural park-like state at the expense of South 32. This will ensure the road will indeed be temporary." Why in the agreement, then, this is Ruth Ann, is number 24 included, that if the value of the work reaches 100,000 or more, the contractors for the agreement not engaged in for boycott of goods or services from Israel, that is state law. And any agreement or any contract we enter to must have that in there. Is that correct, Kim, about boycotting Israel? It's a legal thing that I know a lot of people ask us, but it's a state rule. Go ahead.
I can't give you legal advice in a general session, but I'd be happy to answer that in executive session.
Okay, well, but I can-
But you can certainly advise as you believe the law to be.
Well, I believe that's what the intent of the state legislature was to put that in all our contracts. And Jennifer, I know it's not legal advice, but it's what the state statute, I believe, states.
That is correct. That is correct.
That's why it's on there. So Eric, "It's noisy in here, so I'd like to send this via chat." I am a voting Santa Cruz County resident and part of the community of Patagonia, and includes this email. "I saw the list of 32 pertinent questions that should be answered clearly by South 32 before any action is taken on this. I see this as a civic duty of the county and the whole South 32 responsible to answer these questions clearly and provide to the community in writing. It would be prudent to delay this decision," and I'm sorry. Should be doing it with this, right? Let's see if this works better. I apologize. I should have been using the microphone. "It would be prudent to delay the decision and take time to understand all aspects of South 32's proposed road now and in the future. Yes, South 32 has donated money to good causes, and there are some good folks working up there. But there's more to this. Civic duty to listen to the people of this county, not just the money that is spread around. Also, Patagonia is surrounded by massive park, and I've never heard anyone in town complain that we didn't have enough park space." "Please take the appropriate time to study this completely and answer the question." Nate says, "This is a strong argument on behalf of the county and the people who live here." And then another one says, "If South 32's cultural resource survey, which should include desktop research and coordination with state historic preservation office, didn't discover burial grounds within 200 feet, then there is a significant mistrust in the environmental study being conducted. This should be resolved immediately." And I think some of these people, I think Mary already talked. Eric, Gail, I think is the new one. I agree with Eric. "Please take time to look at all the impacts. It's not just a donation of the park. It's not that simple. It's about respecting the rights and opinions of all residents and landowners." So like I said, most of, Mary had her opportunity to say there, and we will incorporate those into our minutes, so. There's more? So Laurie says, "No amount of goodwill can replace water. While a park and electric trucks are fine, that is not what this is about. Please slow down. Consider impacts of the mine on the Patagonia resources, safety, wildlife, quality of life. Mines come and go. Patagonia is a more sustainable path based on tourism, which the mine is putting in jeopardy." Laurie Cantio, former Patagonia resident, Santa Cruz County taxpayer. Let's see, David Robinson spoke about the Tucson Audubon. Christine, is that Dahl, Dahlhegan? Or Dahlhand, excuse me, thank you. "A complete unbiased and transparent risk-benefit analysis should be a prerequisite to any decision. I can see many benefits to South 32 and occasional trivial donations to county organizations, but it seems that all the risk will accrue to the county and its residents who face threats to traffic, water, wildlife, recreation opportunities that currently exist. Before reaching a decision, I urge the board to carefully examine the actual benefits and risks to all parties to see where the balance is acceptable." "My husband, Richard Conley, voter, and I, Patagonia residents, will be severely impacted by Cross Creek Road connectors. The entrance and traffic we will encounter halfway between our home and work. Clearly, the well-greased palm generosity of South 32 generates support through those in support are not directly impacted by that which is proposed today. It may appear that the park may be a desirable addition to open space. However, we already do have considerable open space, and thus it appears that this is disingenuous. The gatherer before action is taken. Please consider the existing value economics that the region provides the county through this globally attractive environment and wildlife viewing. It is its pace of life and hiking trails. Patience, patience, patience. Please exercise this before you make this crucial decision." Robert Brandt, "What will the county's role be in South 32's application to get a permit to build the road, whether the county accepts the land donation or not?" So Jennifer, do you want to answer that question? I think that, oh, that'd be Rob's.
Sorry. So the county's role in South 32's application with ADOT, the connection to SR82, there is no role. That's ADOT's process. They may inform, but they don't necessarily include the county in the decision of their encroachment permit.
But I think what they're asking here will, what is the process? If they, if they're granted the easement, they will have to apply, like any other residents, for the permits? Everything has to be submitted so that it can be reviewed by Public Works to allow them to build the road? Is that kind of, I think that's what he's asking.
Correct. That's the right-of-way use permit which was discussed before. That does not include a public process. There's also a flood plain use permit, which is a permitting process, but is not a public process. That is a staff-reviewed decision.
But they would still have to apply to the county?
They would have to apply to the county. The county has oversight.
Melanie?
Could I request that the letter to South 32 that the supervisors have copied on become part of the public record for this meeting?
You know, I don't know, since we don't have it here. I don't know, Kim. Our attorney has it, and I don't know. And I think that if South 32 has that and they're going to respond to you, I would feel more comfortable, because it was not addressed to the chairman or any member of this board. It was directed to Mr. Reisner, who is the president of South 32. So I don't know that, at this point, I think it's between them and the people that sent the letter. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but please, Melanie.
Yeah, so we, South 32 will provide a response to the letter. As I said, some of those comments, we tried to incorporate answers in our presentation today. And then you will get a written response from us. With regards to permits, we will follow all requirements from Santa Cruz County and from ADOT. If I can also address the cultural surveys again, because I think this is an important issue that we need to get to the bottom of. So we did cultural surveys on our private property. We did not identify a burial site, but if there is a burial site on the private property that we surveyed, we need to know that location so we can get that from you, Mr. Pulliam. And if you can provide us with the exact location, we will investigate that.
So come up to the podium and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jack Polidori, thank you again. Just want to ask you a quick question. I have a copy of the letter that Valerie Neal just referenced. And as an addendum to my testimony, could I introduce it into the formal record?
Yeah, fine. Just, no, please send it to our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I will tell you, I didn't, hold on, Mr. Pulliam, he was first, and then you, Carolyn.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Will.
As a board of supervisor, I did not receive that letter in my inbox. So it's entirely possible I missed it, but Supervisor Reese missed it, and also Supervisor Malera missed it. So I think there was an issue with-
I believe I got it.
So I think there was an issue with the address that you used for us, but I didn't see that list of questioning until yesterday.
And that's because our attorneys sent us a copy.
I believe a copy of the question I asked earlier, Isabel.
We received those questions and that letter from South 32.
Yeah.
I'd just like to point out and answer to the questions that have come up about the burial site. You'll see immediately adjacent to parcel D, which is part of the road route, the Doyle Pratt Trust, which is within, you're immediately adjacent to it. There is a known burial site there. It was dug up when the house was built and re-concentrated by the Toad Odom elders, and that is immediately adjacent to the property. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for addressing that. Since that's not on our private property, that's why it was not surveyed. Thank you.
Carolyn, you had something else to say?
Well, Kerry Navhan had a chat, I thought you said.
I didn't see him. I think we read them all, didn't we?
A new chat just came up.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have one more chat here, and then we're gonna have our supervisors do it. So which one is it? Linda?
No, the first one.
I think I read all of them.
No, they just came up.
Yeah, but Maria, Mary Teresa Schoolcraft talked, and then.
But she's commenting.
Okay, so this is Adrian H., right? "It is my belief that the proposed road with the enormous truck traffic on State Route 82 and 83 will end our economic, will end an economic devastation of our existing nature and tourism thriving economy. As a resident, taxpayer, and business owner in Patagonia for 27 years, I request that further study be required, and rushing ahead is imprudent for the very health of our county." So with that, we'll go ahead and close it. Now what?
Sir, there's one about that. That addresses the letter that was sent to all supervisors. Linda Short.
Linda. FYI, the letters were sent to the three supervisors via UPS on March 14th, or USPS, the post office. I haven't seen it. I don't know if staff has seen it. You know, why would I tell you I hadn't? I know that staff is very good. When we get letters, they stamp them when they receive them, and then they put them into our, on our desk, so.
Supervisor Reese, if I could address that. When I became aware that there was a letter, I went to check everybody's box. I went to check our mailroom in the back, looking for those letters, because I did hear that they were CC'd to the three of you, but I did not see them in any of your inboxes in any of the county mail that we had received.
So.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to just point out on an easement question one more time, if I could, try to make it clear.
Please.
There's been a lot of talk about the county is being, or South 32 is being granted an easement. We're not granting an easement. They're retaining property rights that they already have. So they're keeping the current existing property rights that they have right now. So I just wanted to try to state that another way to try to make sure it's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Vice Chairman Bracker.
I'm still gathering my thoughts.
Okay. Supervisor Malarra.
Okay. First and foremost, I want to thank staff for putting this study session together. And I want to thank all of you residents for being here and providing input. This is really critical. Anytime, it's part of the process. You have to have process. And I personally appreciate all the input. I've got at least three pages of notes, and thank you. Thank you. And I personally had an issue for a whole year with a mining company a year ago, and they weren't good partners. They weren't good partners. It happened in Rio Rico. And it was devastating because we had our hands tied. I see this process being a little more positive. There's good dialogue between South 32, Santa Cruz County, and the town of Patagonia. The town of Patagonia did not want the materials to go through the town, and I think they've done their due diligence as to go outside the town. I think it can be a good partnership. Our staff had an amazing partnership with Mariposa County Health Center, the city in Ogallis during the pandemic, and it's been one of the most amazing experiences I've been a part of with Santa Cruz County. We've had other partnerships with the Santa Cruz County Port Authority, city in Ogallis, that have been incredibly positive. We've worked really hard for these, and I think, you know, the mine, mining's been here in Arizona. Mining and ranching is what pretty much made our state. They're here. We need to work with them, and they're working with us. And that I find really positive. I think we have to continue this process, and this process will probably continue for another 10, 15, 20, 30 years, because there will be other issues. Issues will come up, and it's our responsibility to listen to you all citizens. And we will continue to listen to you, because the health and safety of our community is our responsibility. Thank you for your comments, and we will continue to dialogue with you.
Vice Chairman Bracker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Supervisor Chairman Reese. I want to let everybody know the letters came today. They were mailed on the 21st and postmarked on the 21st, so. It won't be the first time I saw it, though, but I saw it yesterday. I want to thank everybody for participating in this. I think the most important thing when you have decisions like this as a governing body is public participation. And so we've had great public participation today. I also want to thank everybody for the tone that was set here today. It was very professional, very calm. All the things that are sometimes associated with contentious issues didn't exist at this group, and it makes our job a lot easier, and thank you very much. I understand the seriousness of what we're considering here, but I think the most important thing for me is, as a public official, is the public process. Engaging with the public several times on this issue, because we noticed the meeting, we have a draft proposal of an agreement that just went out late last night. Everybody has to have time to digest this. Everybody's heard the comments that they've had today. They're going to go home, and they're going to digest them. In a couple days, they're going to have some different ideas. They're going to, we just need to work through this process. And the way you do it is through dialogue and by having meetings and by working together. So I just want to encourage my fellow board members to engage a few more times with the public. Maybe perhaps if we just want to have meetings here, perhaps we can do another meeting out in Patagonia. Some people who couldn't come in today will be available. But I really think we need to listen. I think at the end of the day, we're going to end up with a better agreement, with a better understanding of what the issues are from the public. And I know the mine has done incredible outreach with this community, which is how they've engaged Red Rock neighborhood, and they've engaged different people. But the county, this is really our first engagement with these people on this issue. So, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Malarra, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bracker. So this issue that we're discussing here is not an issue that occurred last week, or two weeks ago, or a month ago, or when it was misplaced on, or the agreement, the agenda item was not written correctly. It looked like we were donating land to South 32, and it was the opposite, so we tabled it. Since Arizona Minerals came into this community, I don't know, six, seven years ago, more or less, Melanie, before you guys took over.
We acquired the project in 2018.
What?
2018.
18, so four years ago. And so when Arizona Minerals first came down here, they discovered the ore. We've been in a process of trying to get into memorandums and agreements of understanding between the entities and the county. And it's not anything that has happened right off the bat. A few things that I will say, and I know that there are a lot of different concerns out there, and we understand the issue of safety. We understand many of the issues that were discussed here today with us, and I appreciate your candidness, the way that you all expressed yourself in a very professional. Usually, some of these things can be very emotional, and I've been at meetings where people are almost yelling at you and are angry, and that's not the way you come to consensus. However, I look at the agreement that was sent out yesterday, and unfortunately, it took a long time. And we had the opportunity to individually meet, and, you know, you want us to be transparent, I'm going to be transparent with you. I would have preferred that we all would have met in an executive session. Unfortunately, that did not occur, but we met individually with the attorney, with our county manager, with our staff. We discussed what it was that we wanted to see, what is it that we're going to do, how is this going to work, you know, is South 32 going to be good steward, and how do we keep them to their promise that they make in whatever agreement they sign. And so the process, like I said, started several years ago. We had that bridge wash out on Harsha Road. We went back and forth. We never got the agreement, unfortunately. So now they're having to do different things to fix that bridge out there, and I know tourists go out there. But I believe that at the end of the day, as a board, we have continued to do our due diligence. And we certainly are not going to give away the farm, because South 32 has been very generous to this community. And it's just not Santa Cruz County, I mean, excuse me, it's not just here in Ogallis with some, with the schools, with the senior center, but some of the things that have occurred in the town of Patagonia, where they've gone in, they've helped them pave, they're buying a caboose for their chamber welcoming area. There's a lot of things that they've done. I think they even brought Wi-Fi to the hotel. So at the end of the day is when you look what the opportunity is here in our community when you talk about the green economy. And the green economy is how do we save, how do we cut our carbon footprint? How do we stop that? Well, some of the minerals that are out there are going to help contribute to make batteries, to make solar panels, to cut down the carbon footprint that now exists. The commitment of the company to invest in electric vehicles is great. I think that that, you're not going to hear the roaring of the diesel engines, or, you know, I've been in electric cars that I wonder how they move. It doesn't make a sound. It's kind of scary. So those are some of the things that, when we consider some of these agreements I take into consideration. The other thing, too, is that by no means, if we sign this agreement, does that mean that South 32 is going to get a free pass when it comes to construction of the road? They're willing to work with our Public Works Department to get the permits that are required to turn in whatever engineering is necessary, and they're willing to do that. And so, you know, it's a hard issue for everyone, whether you're for mining, whether you're not for mining, how is this going to affect, how is this going to, you know, affect the children at school? You know, when they start producing, I think the school districts in Sonoyda, Elgin, Ogallis, Rio Rico are going to see a windfall. When you look at what the state of Arizona has done when it comes to public funding of education, they've gutted them. So here we have an opportunity to work together to try to mitigate some of these things. I understand the safety concerns of the roads, and that's something that I, we will discuss. And I think that with my interactions with Mr. Reisner, he's willing to do the things that are necessary to make sure that the safety, that the community continues to give input and move forward. So again, thank you so much. Thank you for those on Zoom that have been listening to here. I can honestly say, now that I got the letter, I didn't know it was mailed. I thought it was emailed, because I never saw an email, but it's right there. Our staff stamps when we get it, so. Was it timely? I don't know, but we will include it in there. And I assure you that if Melanie has said that they are going to respond to all those concerns, that they will, because I believe that we have a good partnership. I want to continue to build a partnership, not just with them, but anyone in this community that wants to help us make it better, because there's a lot of things there. I know that there was a study on, was it birding or economic, or that there was a study that South 32 paid to have. We're going to have that presented at some meeting, I think either late April or maybe in May. So those are some of the things that were mentioned to here, like the Tucson Autobahn. And to tell you the truth, I mean, at the end of the day, I would envision those parcels of land to be probably more of a jewel. I know that Patagonia has that huge park in the middle of town that everybody enjoys during the Fourth of July, but maybe the last couple of years, they haven't. But here would be another opportunity if they're able to get their road built on Flux Canyon. And I have no reason to doubt them that they're not going to continue to pursue that option to take the traffic away. And so, thank you. I appreciate your comments. We will discuss those with our staff when we go into executive session. And, you know, we will post anything that we have. I know, I apologize that it was posted at such a late, late hour. But like I said, as we've been working on this, we really didn't have an opportunity to all three of us meet together and discuss, or we would have released this a lot sooner. We finally got the draft yesterday. We were briefed individually, and once the third supervisor was briefed, then it was posted. So like I said, it's not something that happened overnight, something that didn't happen yesterday, but it's been in the works for a few years now and several months, in fact. So thank you so much. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to recess our study session and convene into executive session pursuant to ARS 3843, 431 03A3, and for discussion and consultation for legal advice and direction regarding the proposed deed and cooperative agreement with Arizona Minerals, Inc., AMI, to accept a land donation from AMI for the purpose of providing a public park. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Do I hear a second? I will second the motion. Become Mr. Bracker. He's going to turn on his mic. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Do you want to meet in here, Jennifer? So we're going to ask everyone to, there's no action item. When we come back, we're just going to adjourn our study session, so this is just legal advice. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did we vote? Okay, good.